Good evening. I would like to bring this courtroom, this meeting to order 7:00 PM. Pennsylvania County General District Courtroom, Edwin R. Shields Courthouse Edition, Leaven Bank Street, Chatham, Virginia. Roll call.
Mr. Farmer?
Here.
Mr. Blackstock?
Present.
Mr. Farmer?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Dr. Miller?
Mr. Davis?
Present. If you will, maybe we have a moment of silence. Thank you. Those who will and can, please stand as we say the Pledge of Leadership to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Items to be added to the agenda. Do we have any?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I don't have anything to add, but I would like to make a motion that we remove item 12-F, Go Virginia Robotics Grant Short Fall from our agenda tonight.
All right, motion made by Mr. Farmer.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Blackstock. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
Please cast your vote. All votes have been passed, I will now close the vote.
Unanimous, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, for the benefit of the public that may have come for that particular topic, if we might very briefly mention that there's not an issue with the grant project, it's just that Mr. Simpson could not be here and speak with us tonight at our work session and at the board meeting. So I just thought it might be helpful to make people aware of why it's being taken off.
Yes, sir. It'll be discussed next month. Thank you, Mr. Sides. Do I have a motion to, for the approval of the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay. Movement by Mr. Warren, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion? Hearing none.
Please cast your vote. All votes have been passed, I will now close the vote.
Vote passes, thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval for the consent agenda.
Consent agenda movement by Mr. Warren. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Farmer. Any discussion? Hearing none.
Please cast your vote. All votes have been passed, I will now close the vote.
Agenda passes unanimously. I would now ask all the Board of Supervisors, if you will, to meet at the front. We have the students.
That's what she said.
Promoted. And anybody that would like to take pictures?
Some of y'all come over this way.
Come on in.
I get the privilege of reading this resolution tonight, but before I do that, I just want to speak to the community of these young folks because I really appreciate that Mr. Davis has allowed me to do this tonight because this, I think, is largely why the members of this board do what we do, because this is our future. And they do a great job in their efforts, and you're going to hear a little about them tonight, but when I read about their accolades and see what they do all the time, it just makes me realize that Pennsylvania County does have a great future and a very bright future. So, without further ado, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, Resolution 2019-05-01, whereas Skills USA headquartered in Leesville, Virginia, is a national career and technical student organization that prepares leadership in the world of work. And whereas students from the Pennsylvania Career and Technical Center attended the 55th Annual Skills USA State Leadership Conference in Virginia Beach, Virginia. And whereas the Technical Center sent nine district champions, those of which competed in eight contests at this year's Leadership Conference. And whereas seven of these students medaled in their respective competitions. And whereas coming in second place and earning a silver medal were Walker Klein from Gretna High School in industrial motor control, Corey Haley from Tunstall High School in job skills demo open, and Christian Burdette from Gretna High School in automotive service technology. And whereas coming in first place and earning a spot at the National Convention in Louisville, Kentucky this June were Bonetta Mill from Chatham High School in first aid CPR, Jacob Edwards from Tunstall High School in CNC turning, Trent Oswald from Chatham High School in CNC milling, and Adam Enoch.
Elconic.
Enoch?
Elconic.
Elconic, okay. From Gretna High School in CNC technician. And whereas these students bring to the table leadership skills and represent their school well on and off campus. And whereas much appreciation is also sent to the instructors who work hard to support and promote these opportunities for their students. Then, be it resolved that the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby express its deepest congratulations and admiration to Pennsylvania Career and Technical Center for its accomplishments at the state competition, given under my hand this 14th day of May 2019, Joe B. Davis, Chairman, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors. A good hand for these superstars. You want to speak? You may have other words to say.
it, and I'll do that before I say a few words.
Who's speaking with you? Come on up and say something.
We are super proud of our students every day. Not only, like he said, are they rock stars in the building, but they are also huge advocates
It says, "Proclamation, Business Appreciation Week, June 3 through the 7, 2019.
outside of the building, and I'm super proud of you all. Also, the instructors, thank you for all of your work and all your efforts.
Whereas Pennsylvania County is pleased to have a thriving business base of industry
I'm super proud. Thank you.
We have a resolution for Mr. Dalton to go to the school, but we also have individual
to support our local economy, whereas these businesses provide essential employment opportunities for the county citizens, and whereas these businesses provide local revenues from which
resolutions for each one of the participants.
benefit the entire local citizenry, and whereas these businesses also make significant contributions
So, thank you. (APPLAUSE).
to the county's communities, promote educational opportunities for its children, promote a variety of activities which increases our area quality of life. And whereas the county's Board of Supervisors and county citizens recognize and appreciate these businesses. Therefore, the Board does hereby proclaim the week of June 3 through 7 of 2019 as Business Appreciation Week within our county. Be it further proclaimed, that copy of this proclamation will be forwarded to local media, given under my hand the 14th day of May 2019, Joe B. Davis, Chairman." And I'm presenting this to Ms. Susan McClothlin with the county. Just a few words. You know, me and my wife are fortunate enough to own a small business in Gretna, so I know exactly what the impact of whether it's small business or large business can do for our local citizens. So whether you're a business owner or a customer, which we all are, just remember to keep the county first when you're looking to buy something, and let's work hard to support our local industries. You got anything you'd like to say?
I did. I have a really quick thing to say. Tuesday, I wanted to talk about what our towns are doing really quick. Tuesday, June 4, there'll be Chatham Handmade or Homegrown, 4:00 to 6:30 in Competition Alley. Wednesday, June 5, will be the Town of Hurt Meet and Greet from 9:00 to 11:00 at Pocket, 533 Pocket Road. And Thursday, June 6, Gretna Main Street Merchants Meet and Greet will be from noon to 1:00 at the Gretna Caboose Park. Please come out and support. Thank you.
Thank you. (APPLAUSE).
Is Ms. Mitten here?
Hello?
It's a board member.
Yes, ma'am. How are y'all?
We're good.
Proclamation, Community Action Month, May 2019. Whereas the community action has made essential contributions to individuals and families across the nation by creating economic opportunities and strengthening communities. And whereas community action is a robust state and local force connecting people to life-changing services and creating pathways to prosperity in 99% of all of American counties. And whereas community action builds and promotes economic stability as an essential aspect of enabling and enhancing stronger communities and stable homes. And whereas county action promotes community-wide solutions to challenges throughout our cities, suburbs, and rural areas. And whereas community action delivers innovative services and supports that create greater opportunities for families and children to succeed. And whereas community action insists on community participation and involvement, ensuring that all sectors of the community have a voice and will be heard. And whereas community action is celebrating 55 years of innovation, impact, and providing proven results for Americans. Now therefore, the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim May 2019 as Community Action Month in recognition of the hard work and dedication of the Pennsylvania County Community Action Agency, given under my hand this 14th day of May 2019, Joe B. Davis, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you.
For all you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anything you guys would like to say?
We want to thank the Board of Supervisors for their continuous support through our funding years. Each year, they are supporting what we're doing for the community. May 24, at Cherrystone Baptist Association Center, will be Community Awareness Day. We will have vendors there providing services for the community. We'll have food. We'll have activities for the children, so everyone is welcome. Please come to join us. Thank you.
Thank you. (APPLAUSE). Are you finished?
Everybody knows who's really a child, right?
The county administrator was worried that we couldn't function without him. We can't function without our administration.
Your next agenda item, I'll now invite Ms. Holly Eastamfield, our Director of Human Resources. She's going to, with the assistance of the Board, present some county employee service awards.
Thank you. So, last week, we had the pleasure of hosting our 24th Annual Service Award Ceremony for employees of Pennsylvania County, and we were honored to recognize 43 employees that had years of service spanning from five to 30 years of service. So, this evening, we invited all of the employees who have 20 or more years of service back to this meeting to be recognized and honored by the Board of Supervisors. So, I have done a little PowerPoint presentation. Hopefully, most of them are here. So, we just want to get started with the first one. Who's doing that? Okay. So, Adrian Magic, come on up. Adrian has 20 years of service with the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian.
Next is Scott Campbell. Is he here this evening?
I don't see him.
Nope. Scott has 20 years of service with the Sheriff's Department, so congratulations to him. Matthew Dawson, is he here this evening?
He has a family of his.
Okay. Okay. He has 20 years of service as well with the Sheriff's Department, so. David Dutton, 20 years with the Sheriff's Department. Is he here this evening? Shannon Edwards, 20 years of service with the Sheriff's Department. There he is. Congratulations. Brian Haskins, Commonwealth Attorney, has 20 years of service.
Prosecution.
Baron Parker, 20 years of service with the Sheriff's Department. Is he here this evening? No, congratulations. Kim Vanderhaid, I know she's here, 20 years of service with the Pennsylvania County. Kathy Yates, 20 years of service. Kathy makes sure we always pay, so she deserves special recognition. Cory Webb, is Cory here this evening? Cory Webb has 25 years of service with the Sheriff's Department, so congratulations to Cory. Jeffrey Stone, 30 years of service. Congratulations. And that's it. Mr. Davis?
Thank you. I do appreciate, we had a gathering the other day with the employees, and may I say that, once again, I will try to reiterate, I can't go over what we said, but they are worker bees for the county, and they do it all, and I appreciate it. And no fault or any action that they do that I can see goes unnoticed, and we are very appreciative to have star winners in our county, and that means from whatever level they're at, they all do, I feel in my mind, a good job, because I watch things when I come and snoop around up here, that you could ask the county administrator who's out of town, who will verify that I snoop when I come and I'm watching, I notice things. And we have a wonderful staff of people that I am indebted to, and my house is their house. Thank you once again for all that you do and your time and service.
Mr. Chairman, we have one more presentation that Sheriff Taylor is going to leave concerning presentation of child identification kits or programs.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. I was called just a few weeks ago by my friend, Jack Lewis, who is the Grand Senior Deacon of Kit Lodge 305, and our good friend in our neighborhood. And for many years, the Masonic lodges across the nation had been involved in a child identification During that time, they acquired many pieces of equipment, but they're getting out of that business now. So they reached out to law enforcement to see if law enforcement in their communities, their respective communities, would be receptive in taking that equipment and putting it to good use. So I'll let, I'll let Mr. Lewis come up. If you have any questions about him, he's here tonight to present that equipment to the sheriff's office for continued, the continued purpose of child identification.
Thank you, Sheriff. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. As the sheriff said, I'm Jack Lewis. I live here in the county, in Spring Garden, and, but I'm here in a different capacity tonight representing the Grand Lodge of Ancient Free and Accepted Masons of the Commonwealth of Virginia. There are well over 33,000 masons in Virginia in 296 lodges all across the state, seven of which are here in our area, two in Danville, five here in the county, in Riceville, in Blair's, in Keeland, in Gretna, and here in Chatham. Over the last 20 years, the masons of Virginia have been involved in the Child ID Program, which started with paper and ink and fingerprinting children and giving those records to their parents in the event they should ever need them. The system evolved into an electronic system where a computer is used to gather, scan those fingerprints, take pictures, capture video recordings of the children, and then transfer that onto a disk to give it to the parents. Over the last 20 years, well over 12,000 children in this county and the city of Danville have been fingerprinted by Masons. As the sheriff said, we're transitioning away from that partly because of the issues and the time it takes with these systems, but we had a little less than 20 of them that we had in Richmond. And the Grand Lodge sought to identify sheriff's departments, police agencies, that had a demonstrated commitment to child safety. So it wasn't very hard to find a good home for two of these systems. They each cost a little over $3,000 apiece to pass on to the Pennsylvania County Sheriff's Department through you for their use at festivals, events, schools, churches, or even at their office on scheduled time for parents to bring children in to have this identification program done. As a resident, I want to tell you how much I appreciate the continued commitment that the Board of Supervisors in this county has to all aspects of public safety. I certainly recognize that that's a key to the quality of life that all of us who choose to live here in the county hope to enjoy, and we appreciate all your efforts to ensure that. And it's my pleasure at this time to present these two kids to a good sheriff who's going to, I'm sure, hand them quickly to somebody else to, that's the way that works, I kind of know. So, but if you would indulge me for just a second, that I could get somebody to take just a picture?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, does anybody have any conversation, anything that they would like to ask, Jack? Okay, all right. Since I'm with this lodge, the three of us, I'm going to get in this picture, if you don't mind, because I want my two grandchildren to be the first on the list to be fingerprinted and DNA'd.
And, Mr. Chairman, I just said, I appreciate the one on the board who really knows me well for not asking questions, so that's.
That would be me.
Yes, it would, sir. This is as tall as I get. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all very much.
I'd like for the audience just to know what Mr. Lewis was referring to. He had about 40 years of law enforcement service to the state of Virginia, and I think you finished up down in North Carolina, didn't you, Jack?
Yes, sir.
Yep. I went to work from Pennsylvania County over to Lynchburg many years ago to help open up that network of regional jails, and one of the first faces that I saw over there was Jack, and it was nice to see a friendly, familiar face over there in Lynchburg. So, thank you for what you've done, and thank you for the.
Yes, sir. It's a great pleasure.
ID kits.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. I would be quick to add that the Masons give, I think, $3 million a week, each week, and not only that, not only is it a great organization, they fly, I didn't realize this till I have a friend who's in the Shriners, they fly children, say, from Guatemala that have medical conditions that can't be handled there. They fly them over here, they treat their medical conditions and give them what they properly need, and fly them back for no charge. So I do appreciate the Board helping the Masonic brothers out. Item number nine, Hearing of the Citizens. Each person addressing the Board under Hearing of the Citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county, or the registered agent, resident or landowner. The person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the Board more than once during the Hearing of Citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the Board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the Citizens shall last for a maximum of 45 minutes. Any individual that is signed up to speak during the said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting, absent the chairman's approval. No person shall be able to speak who is not signed up. Now we come to public hearings.
Did anybody sound?
Yes, sir. Pardon me, I'm just a little bit ahead of myself, I do. Pardon me. We have, for the first guest, Mr. Ronald Rowland. Will you step up?
Can y'all shoot a picture?
Sure. Oh, we've done that before. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Thank y'all very much.
I'd like for the audience just to know, what Mr. Lewis was referring to, he had about forty years of law enforcement service to the state of Virginia, and I think you finished up down in North Carolina, didn't you, Jack?
Yes, sir.
Yep. I went to work from Pennsylvania County over to Lynchburg many years ago to help open up that network of regional jails, and one of the first faces that I saw over there was Jack, and it was nice to see a friendly, familiar face over there in Lynchburg. So thank you for what you've done and thank you for the...
Yes, sir. It's a great pleasure.
ID kits.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. I would be quick to add that the masons give, I think, three million dollars a week, each week, and not only that, not only is it a great organization, they fly, I didn't realize this till I have a friend who's in the Shriners, they fly children, say, from Guatemala that have medical conditions that can't be handled there, they fly them over here, they treat their medical conditions and give them what they properly need, and fly them back for no charge. So I do appreciate the board helping the Masonic brothers out. Item number nine, hearing of the citizens. Each person addressing the board under hearing of the citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county, or the registered agent, resident or landowner. The person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during the hearing of citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last for a maximum of forty-five minutes. Any individual that is signed up to speak during the said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting, absent the chairman's approval. No person shall be able to speak who is not signed up. Now we come to public hearings.
Did anybody sign up?
Yes, sir. Pardon me, I'm just a little bit ahead of myself, I do. Pardon me. We have for the first guest, Mr. Ronald Rowland. Will you step up?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, I'm Ronald Rowland, Chief of Police for the Town of Hert. All I come to do was, I gave y'all a letter earlier, invite y'all to the Town of Hert's Business Appreciation Day on the fifth of June, representing the Town of Hert. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Am I not supposed to open and close these public hearings?
This is a hearing of the citizens.
Okay, just want to make sure, I don't, okay, I don't want to violate any of the policies. All right, we have Ms. Connie Wright. Would you step up, please?
She can never speak on the dog control.
Okay, Donna, okay, on the dog control. No one else is there, okay. So that's it, I got the wrong, okay. All right. Can we move on to the public hearing, rezoning public housing?
Correct.
Or republic hearings. All right. Pursuant to Article V, Five, Division Six of Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, the Board of Supervisors have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, the board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. The board must ensure that all of its decisions and regulations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its posterity. Case number one, public hearing rezoning case R-19-016. I open this hearing up at seven thirty-six. Mr. Sides.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Case R-19-016, James T. Motley has petitioned to rezone seventeen point three-one acres located on State Road 685, Chalk Level Road, in the Callens-Gretna election district, from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agricultural District to combined with an adjacent farm. Once the property is rezoned to A-1, then all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted use. The planning commission recommended by unanimous vote that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summary is enclosing the board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Motley is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Motley?
Thank you, sir. Just a matter of cleaning up some property lines and that type of thing. I thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Motley. I see no one else signed up for rebuttal. So I close this hearing at seven thirty-seven. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for case R-19-016, that we rezonate seventeen point three-one acres from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agricultural District.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Farmer and a second by Mr. Blackstock. Do we have any further discussion? All right, hearing none.
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I'll endorse.
Motion carries unanimous, and Mr. Motley, your property's been rezoned. May I say to those that are in the audience tonight, once your property is rezoned, we'd love to keep you and have you if you'd like to listen in. If not, you are welcome to leave, so we do appreciate if you would, if you'd like, you could stay. Okay, case number two, public hearing rezoning case R-19-017, JDA Associates, Inc. I open this hearing up at seven forty. Mr. Sides.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Case R-19-017, JDA Associates has petitioned to rezone a total of ninety-eight point six-six acres, two parcels of land located off State Road 743, Orphanage Road, in the Chatham-Blair's and Westover election districts, from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agricultural District, to subdivide the property into approximately seven lots using the existing fifty feet of road fundage that was left for future development. The planning commission recommended by unanimous vote that the petitioner's request be granted with the proffer presented in the packet as follows. The proffer states, "All deeds shall have a restriction prohibiting all uses listed in the A-1 Agricultural District other than those allowed by right in the R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District. Placement of single-wide mobile homes shall be prohibited. Stick-built homes only to be built by Talbot Construction and Walker Contractors." Staff summary is enclosing the board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Talbot is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Talbot?
I don't have anything to add, except if you have questions or I can, you know, other information, I'd be glad to share with you. I can give you a little background of how we got to this point, if that would help. This ninety acres, ninety-eight acres is land left from the area that we developed called Fairfield Park Subdivision over the last thirty years. And this ninety-eight acres, which we had intended to develop into a subdivision with lots, but the soil wouldn't perk the amount of lots, so our only option, about fifteen years ago, was to do a sewer pumping system to take care of this, but the cost was so expensive, we kind of put it on hold, then the economy kind of took care of the rest of it. So our only option to use this land is to rezone it, because we can find seven spots that the soil will perk for these seven tracks we'd like to cut up, which will enable us to use the tracks, build some houses, which would blend with the existing subdivision that were adjacent to.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Talbot. I don't believe anyone else has anything to address.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. Mr. Talbot, what type of road, drive, entry road are you going to construct?
Well, each track fronts on state roads in Fairfield Park. So each track will have a fifty-foot wide strip of land connecting from the road to the track as it opens up.
Okay.
And we'll have dryways on that fifty-foot strip of gravel or whatever the customer wants to have.
Okay. Yes. Anyone else? No one signed up to speak against this, is that correct? All right, I close this meeting. Thank you, Mr. Talbot, you can sit down. Thank you, sir. I close this meeting at seven forty-three. I close the public hearing, that is, seven forty-three. Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that we approve case R-19-017 to rezone ninety-eight point six-six acres, two parcels of land located off State Road 734 and Orphanage Road in the Chatham-Blair's and Westover election districts with the proffered conditions.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Skars, and a second by Mr. Warren. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to let Mr. Talbot and JDA Associates know how much I personally appreciate the fact that you all did your work well in advance in communicating the existing residents of Fairfield Park that are affected by this, and job well done, appreciate it very much. It made it a lot easier on the planning commission and certainly on us as we get it tonight, that you all had involved them from the beginning and let them know exactly what you were going to do, so appreciate that very much.
We have a motion and a second. No more discussion. Hearing none.
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
Vote carries unanimous. Mr. Talbot, your property's been rezoned, thank you. Case number three, public hearing rezoning case R-19-018, Mr. Kenneth Yaman. I open this public hearing up at seven forty. Mr. Greg Sides.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Case R-19-018, Kenneth Yaman has petitioned to rezone five acres located on State Road 745, Mountview Road, in the Westover election district, from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agricultural District to consolidate with the adjacent farm already zoned agricultural. Once the property is rezoned to A-1, then all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted uses. The planning commission recommended by unanimous vote that the petitioner's request be granted. Staff summary is enclosed in your board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Yaman is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Chairman, do you have anything you'd like to add, sir?
The only thing I'd just like to add is, I'm just trying to make my home and all consistent with the rest of the farm.
All right. Thank you. Anybody have anything else they would like to ask? Okay, thank you, Mr. Yaman. No one signed up in rebuttal of this case. I close this public hearing at seven forty-one. What's the pleasure of the board, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that we approve R-19-018 to rezone five acres from residential R-1 to A-1 Agricultural District located on State Road 745, Mountview Road, in the Westover District.
Second. All right, I have a motion by Mr. Skars and a second by Mr. Barber. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none.
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
Passage unanimously. Mr. Yaman, your property's been rezoned. Thank you. Other public hearings. Each person addressing the board under a public hearing shall step up, give his or her name and district and his or her place of residency for non-county citizens, in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes, speaker for a group, and for a limited time of ten minutes. A speaker shall conclude their remarks at that time unless the consent of the board is affirmatively given to extend the speaker's allotted time, absent chairman's approval. No person shall be able to speak who is not signed up. Public hearing, dog-controlled area. Ms. Kalen McCluster.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. County staff received a petition from Carol Cooper, a resident of Museval Road in the county, requesting the board consider amending the Pennsylvania County Code 2.2-22, dogs running at large restrictions in designated areas to include the following sections of Museval Road and Anderson Mill Road, 1128 Museval Road to 1348 Museval Road, and from 12620 Anderson Mill Road to Burton Lake Road. County staff has verified there are twenty-six property owners within this area. Ms. Cooper's petition has sixteen signatures, which represents sixty-one point five percent of the property owners in the proposed dog control area. At the April sixteenth, two thousand nineteen business meeting, the board authorized county staff to advertise for a public hearing for citizen input on amending the PCC 2.2-22 to include the aforementioned sections of Museval Road and Anderson Mill Road. The public hearing was advertised in the Chatham Star Tribune on May the first and May the eighth. County staff has also spoken with Ms. Susan Dillon, Chief Animal Control Officer, and she did confirm that if dogs are on an official hunt, they would not be picked up even if they are in this controlled area. Most hunting dogs have identification that enable animal control to get them back to their rightful owner. County staff recommends the board conduct this required public hearing for citizen input on amending the 2.2-22 Dogs Running at Large Restrictions in Designated Areas to include the aforementioned sections of Museval Road and Anderson Mill Road.
Thank you, Ms. McCluster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor?
You now need to open the public hearing and then invite whomever signed up to come forward.
I wanted to make sure I was on track right there. I opened this public hearing up at seven forty-four, and we have Ms. Connie Wright, I believe it is. Think I got it right this time. Thank you, ma'am, if you will.
My name is Connie Wright, and I live at 620 North Main Street in Chatham. It's in the county, it's outside of the town limits. I didn't know about the dog control being on the agenda, but I also wanted to voice my opinion about dogs being controlled. In the last two weeks, a pit bull has been running loose. It's been coming into the town of Chatham as well as is in the county. It lives within walking distance to the town, but I pulled up at my house on last Thursday night, the pit bull jumped up on my car door. I couldn't even get out the car. And so I called the 8121 phone number, which is Communications, but that wasn't the first time they had been called about the same dog. And I also called the dog warden people. They came out on the next day, and they also had the dog on another Thursday night that the dog was running loose. And it seems as though it's really nothing they say that they can do, that the dog can just be loose, and I don't understand that, especially a dog that has been labeled so dangerous. I'm, you know, trying to get the understanding of what can be done about a dog that can just run loose, one that you feel that is really a dangerous dog. They're saying that the dog is friendly and it's a puppy, but it's a dog and it's been labeled a pit bull, and it is a pit bull. They had the proper records for their vaccinations and all of that, so seemingly it was nothing that they could do. So the dog is loose just about every day and on other people's property, and I just was trying to find out what can be done about a dog of that danger being loose. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. I have no one else signed up to speak, so I'm going to close this public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I think we did have some people signed up to speak for that one.
Okay, well, I don't, I don't, pardon, pardon me. Mr. Richard Gill.
That was not on the dog.
It should be 10B1.
Okay. All right. Mr. Ryland Reynolds.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Ryland Reynolds. I live on Tomahawk Creek Road, which is in the Gretna, Chatham, Callens-Gretna district, and I am a landowner and reside there as a resident. In the past several years, this board has designated sixteen areas in this county as dog control areas, and dogs cannot run at large. Every one of those sixteen areas that has so far been designated are very highly populated areas, either a subdivision or an area that is so populated that it could be considered a subdivision if it's out of name. Tonight is the first time that you, as a board, are going to be considering a very, very rural, sparsely populated area for a dog control area. I contacted Animal Control last week to see how many problems they've had in this particular area that has been applied for, and was advised that the calls so far had involved one dog and two people. It is my understanding that the dog in question is going through a court proceeding at the present time to be declared a dangerous or vicious animal. And I think that is where it needs to be in the court system, not here in front of the boards of supervisors, because it is a serious situation if a dog is biting someone. I think the dog is also involved a couple of other dogs in this community, and it needs to be something, you know, taken care of on that avenue, but I think the board in designating a very large area, as big as this area is, as a dog control area that is so rural, when part of the requested area does not belong to any of the people that have signed the petition, it belongs to other people who lease their land to people to hunt on. And also, the area in question is, like I say, very rural, and if you make this area a designated area for control of a dog, if you're going to do that when you've just got two people that's having a conflict, when you already got something on the books that can have a dog if it's been biting somebody, you're going to create a situation where you go up a real can of worms, where if two neighbors get in a discussion about their dog and one don't like the other dog, they're going to be down here, and they're going to be asking for the same thing, and it's going to create a situation that you're not going to be able to control, and Animal Control certainly not going to be able to control it, because they have very limited resources, are very limited people, and they're not going to be able to keep up with it either. And I just request that you, you know, consider some avenue, other avenue, to take care of this problem.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Ms. Elkins.
Hi, I'm Austina Elkins. I live at 1540 Museville, the Cattle and Gretna District. I'm a landowner, and I do have dogs, and I feel like we live in the country, in the deep, deep country. We don't live in just Chatham. It's deep country for a reason. I don't like the deer in my yard. I don't like the bear in my yard, but they can't read as well as dogs in the neighborhood. And to speak on the dangerous pit bull labeling, I do home health, and I go in people's houses in Hurtin' Lynch Station. That's the people that I see for central home health, and I've been bit on several occasions by chihuahuas. So those are your dangerous dogs. So I just wanted to let you know that I was also against that in this neighborhood. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Elkins. Mr. Freddie L. Meltons?
Melton.
Melton, okay. I see a S.E. behind that, O.N. Okay, go ahead.
I live at 735 Museville, and I have a beagle, but there's other beagles, and there's a pit bull that comes in my yard. I have no problem with them. If you vote to do this, then if my dog just happens to step off the property line, am I going to, you know, I'm going to get fined for it. I got 12 and 1/2 acres. Why do this rural area like that? You know, I mean, the other two dogs, they come in my yard. I have, they're going to get fined too. I mean, they're nice dogs. One of them's a pit bull. No problem at all with him, so I vote no against it anyway, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Melton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Mark Holland. I'm from Danville. I represent Carol Cooper, who initiated this action. You know, as the first gentleman mentioned, this has happened a number of times. This is not a unique situation. The county code provides for it, and the county has already established 16 other designated areas. And what the code provides is if there's a majority of the citizens, and you've heard from Ms. McCluster, 61% of the residents of this neighborhood want y'all to take this action. And the code says if the majority of the landowners, and it's a reasonably defined area, and Ms. McCluster's told you this is a reasonably defined area. The code doesn't talk about whether or not it's rural or very rural. We're in the county. It's all rural. You know, that's what this code is for, is to take those parts of this rural county and make it safe for landowners. And it's irrelevant whether little dogs bite some people and big dogs bite some people. The majority of the owners of this, in this neighborhood, in this area, it's not, perhaps it's not a neighborhood, this area, want y'all to do this. And so when the majority of the members of the community, and Ms. McCluster can tell you, it's only one, if the husband signs the petition, the wife can't, and vice versa. So there are more people who sign than 61%, but y'all only consider one owner of each property. So more than 61% of the adults who own property in this area want y'all to do this, but the ordinance says you only accept the signature of one of the owners of a house or land. And so the majority want this. Ms. Cooper, in the process of doing this, got attacked in her own property. She's begun this process and has been attacked since she started this process. The folks who want you to take this action, it will be the 17th area that will be protected, and we ask you to vote in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor.
And if anyone has questions, I'm happy to entertain them. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Okay, hold on a moment, Counselor.
Yes, sir.
And looking at this area, I see one little triangle up here at the top, right-hand. It looks like it jumps from track to track, goes down one side of the road, and then you've got a triangle up here, just a little corner. Did the people in the other area refuse to sign the petition, or why was that area left there just not, when you say clearly defined? I know if I went up there as an Animal Control officer, this could be complicated to administer.
I'll let Mr. Hump, Mr. Blackstock. You are correct. It's a different-looking map in there. The map that's in your packet on page 69, that just represents the owners of the affected area that signed the petition in favor of this area. The parcels that have jumped over, those people did not sign the petition. We have since have a map that shows the entire area that's been, that we've worked up, but those parcels that are missing, they are in the affected area, however, those individuals chose not to participate in the petition.
So the map, this is before the Board of Supervisors tonight, is not the actual, yeah, the enforcement area that you're asking us to take a look at and vote on?
The enforcement area is described in the ad, and it's between those points, it's defined from 1128 Museville Road to 1348 Museville Road and 12620 Anderson Mill Road to Burton Lake Road.
You gave me a lawyer answer. I'm asking you yes or no, was that map we're looking at, that's not the defined area? That's not the designated area?
No, that just represents who signed the petition. I believe that the, we're supposed to distribute the ones, did that not occur?
No, the one that I received was not reflective. It actually had more parcels included in it than what is actually affected. It was a more broad map, and I've got somebody that's trying to redo that now, but we did not get that earlier today.
But I believe your standard procedure is you define the area based on the description, and then you just indicate these are the ones assigned to petition.
Yes, that is correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Farmer.
I have a question, too, Mr. Chairman. This one is different any I've looked at. By making this a dog-controlled area, you're pretty well making all those places in between at one also because they can't let their dog run free, because it's, I would wonder, because I'm seeing a ton of lots here. Is that correct?
That's correct. As has been pointed out, the Board in the past has designated 16 areas as dog control areas, and I'm just quickly doing the math. I believe 13 of the 16 were in actual subdivisions, but it's not without precedent. There are at least three that were not in a planted subdivision.
But you see what I'm saying? The way this map's so laid out, you're actually going to create a problem for everybody in between them, because if they wander into there, and I mean, it borders the control area, that's kind of different any I've seen that we've done so far.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Counselor. Wait a minute, hold on a moment. Is, you through? Thank you. We're going to let the Counselor sit down. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to close this public hearing, or do we still have?
Do you have anybody else who's signed up on your form?
No, I don't. I have the right form here. You know what? I must admit, I'm not blaming nobody, but all these other forms, I just only saw one, and I put a name to that one. So I do apologize, apologize for my obtuseness, but I have more sheets to look at, but there are no more names on here. So if you didn't sign up, can I do this, Counselor? You can step forward. Anyone else would like to make a statement on this issue? Yes, sir, I thank you, Mr. Motley.
Correct.
Well, at least I remembered that.
I really wasn't aware of this until tonight. I do have to really agree with Mr. Reynolds. This opens up a whole can of worms. I live in rural area. I don't have a dog right now, but dogs come through, and my wife fusses because the deer do come in our yard. But I think that, I understand it's in the courts. I think the county has got maybe more important issues than to worry about somebody's dog running loose. And I just think you are asking for more work for your employees to do to take them away from something else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Motley. There's no one else, so I'm going to close this public hearing at 8 o'clock.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Farmer.
First of all, I'd like to commend Ms. Cooper. She has went through a lot of processes, a lot of efforts, a lot of just hard work to make it here tonight, to get in front of this Board, to tell her story and what's going on at her residence. I also would like to say with Ms. Cooper's efforts, it's really been, in my opinion, it's a county-wide issue that we struggle with, not just a Cattle and Gretna topic. And I think she's been a great advocate to bring that attention, that awareness to our attention. I would like to suggest that we do not take action on this tonight, because I'm not convinced that the dog-controlled area is the proper tool that we need for this particular spot in my district. I would like to encourage, and I'm the chairman of the Legislative Committee, that we go back to do our homework on the dog nuisance ordinance that was started two or three months ago, that has yet to see the light of day because it just hasn't made it through committee, that we go back and get that policy completed and recommended to the full Board. That will be a county-wide ordinance, not just one that's for this particular case. So that's my thought on this case tonight.
Is that your motion?
I'd like to make a motion to table it. Yeah, if so, I'd like to make a motion that we table this item until another later date.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Farmer and a second by Mr. Blackstock to table this until next, the next legislative committee meeting we have. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Okay, the vote carries unanimously for it to be tabled to the next legislative committee meeting. Thank you. Now we move on to Item 2, Public Hearing, Wayside Park Deed Restriction and Open Space Easement, Public Hearing and Potential Approval of the Same. Mr. Mark Moore.
I'm thinking it's the one at the bottom. Yeah. How do we get that?
Good evening, Board members. The grant agreement and the easement that you have in your board packet today is a result of a December award of a $106,460 grant from the Virginia Outdoors Foundation. The grant is for, as part of the mitigation of forest land removed from the Mountain Valley Pipeline project going on in the county now. The grant agreement is for the $106,460, and then the easement is on the park. The open space easement has four restrictions. The restrictions are no timbering on that project, hence the forest mitigation piece of the grant. It allows for us to put a Virginia Outdoors Foundation sign on the property. We have to keep the park open to the public, and we cannot subdivide the property. There are a number of deed restrictions already in place for this piece of property that we've had in our hands for decades. So none of these create a huge burden. These are things, reinforcing things that we were already going to do on the park, but that, in your packet is the grant agreement and the easement as well. So I can answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for the Board? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Mark, I know when we initially began talking about looking for grants for Wayside Park, it was some white pines that were planted down there, the block of view, and they were concerned about, some of the community members about, because those white pines blocked the view of a lot of the open space of the park from the road, that might be a security issue. Is this going to hinder us from thinning those pines or getting rid of them?
I was looking through the restrictions.
I read through, and I couldn't get a clear answer to that. I looked at the documents that was in the packet, that are in the packet.
Exhibit A, Exhibit A on page 4, no timbering shall be permitted other than the following purposes, cutting trees for maintenance, creation and maintenance of trails, removal of invasive trees, removal of trees posing imminent hazard to the health or safety of persons or to the property. So just in my opinion, and Baden, you can speak up if you see fit, there would be, if we were to look to remove any trees because of safety concerns, then that would be a discussion we would have with the Virginia Outdoors Foundation, and is allowed for in Exhibit A. Is that how you read it, Baden?
My take on this would be, we would present our case, a compelling reason why we need to cut those for safety reasons, and then they would make a decision on a case-by-case basis. I think we could put a compelling case together that would allow us to selectively cut some trees for public safety. There are exceptions to the no timbering. He just read them. There are five of them, and I believe that what you speak of would fall under the exception number three.
That's the only question I have.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, the reason why we have to have a public hearing today is that Virginia Code, Section 15.2, 1800B, says that any time publicly-owned property, any time the Board of Supervisors either disposes of it or grants a right to another party in publicly-owned lands, you have to have a public hearing to hear public comment about it. We are granting an easement to the Virginia Outdoors Foundation concerning open space and no timbering, therefore, we have to have a public hearing, and this public hearing was duly and legally advertised in the newspaper. So I just ask you, open the public hearing. If whomever signed up, you listen to them. If not, close the public hearing, and then we ask you to vote, and we have a sample motion for you on page 78.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I appreciate you leading me into that, Counselor. I'll open this public hearing at 8:07, and no one signed up, with all of these sheets, I know. I got it right this time, and I'm going to close this at 8:08, I believe it is, if I was correct.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the Virginia Outdoors Foundation grant agreement, an easement, and authorize the county administrator to sign both documents on the county's behalf.
All right. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Moore, would you come back up, please, sir?
Mr. Moore, I think this is a good opportunity for you to share with what the total extent of this project is and how much participation we had from outside of county sources, because I think it's important for our citizens to realize how many partners we have in this project and what an outstanding opportunity I think it is for the northern end of the county. And I compliment both you and Mr. Blackstock for their efforts to get this done.
Yeah, I compliment Elton as well. He's been a driving force behind this project. So Wayside Park initially started out as a $75,000 project to make some improvements from the county. It's evolved into a $713,000 project. The county has put $75,000 in over the next two years for $150,000. The remaining, a little more than half a million dollars is coming from the Virginia Outdoors Foundation, the grant we just spoke of. J.T. Mini-Mod has committed $100,000. And then we have two other grant partners that we will hear from by the end of this month that we have presented to on this project. So feel strongly about those, and more than likely, next Board meeting will be coming to you with those, the remainder of those grants. So this is a $713,000 project in the northern part of the county. Funders, potential total of five funders. This is a project that was, they were very excited about because the northern part of the county, the multimodal park there beside it, and an opportunity to rehab a 50-acre park that we've had for, like I said, for decades. park that we've had for, like I said, for decades. So, this is a $713,000 project. More than half a million dollars of that project will be grant-funded. To give you some perspective, I think I've mentioned this in a previous workshop or work session, the middle school park project was a $650,000 project, and that also involved more than half a million dollars in grant funding, and we had nine funding partners for that. So, that project was awarded the VACO, Top VACO Award last year, and they came and made a presentation. So, this is a wonderful project, was also able to secure a $15,000, Danville Regional Foundation planning grant. We master-planned this park. We kinda went back to the drawing board towards the end of last year, made it bigger and better at a number of funders' requests because they saw the significance in where the park was located, both beside the multimodal park as well as in the northern part of the county in Hurt. So, they were excited to see this project come across their desk. I think we'll be pleased with, here in a couple of weeks, when the final tally of grant funding comes through. But this has been a great project. Anyone you talk to, there are a lot of Wayside Parks in Virginia. There are dozens of them. The Pennsylvania Wayside Park is one that's near and dear to that community's heart. Talked to people that have had family members baptized in Sycamore Creek, geologists that go out and pan the creeks for stone, Boy Scouts. We had recently had Bryce Atkins Eagle Scout finish up his project doing steps up the hill from the Hanging Bridge to the Pavilion. So, had a lot of community support. I went to, last Wednesday, I went to the Vinton Library in Roanoke County for the second round of the Virginia Outdoors Foundation grant funding, and they highlighted this project as a community project. And because of this project, this was one of seven projects in the state to get funded, and because of this project, they, their Board of Trustees in Richmond, they saw the importance of securing a portion of the $3 million in grant funding that'll be available for this second go-around, securing 20% of that funding for community-based projects like this. So, it really, this project really got their wheels to turning. They were really happy to support it, and we were one of seven, so that says a lot. So, this is a project that covers and touches a lot of bases.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
For the good job you've been continually doing.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further comments? Any discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
As is unanimously. Thank you. We go on to number three, public hearing, enterprise zone amendments. Ms. Susan McCullough.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. A little bit of a summary, the Virginia General Assembly allows counties and cities in the Commonwealth to designate a gillage of land in a certain geographic area as an enterprise zone. The Commonwealth also offers enterprise zone grants, and localities can offer local enterprise zone grants and incentives. Pennsylvania County has two enterprise zones. One is Enterprise Zone 57, which is a joint zone shared with the City of Danville, and it includes Kane Creek and Gretna and parts of Chatham, and Enterprise Zone 24, which is newer and predominantly includes the Southern Virginia Multimodal Park at Berry Hill, I'm sorry, the Southern Virginia Mega Park at Berry Hill, and the Southern Virginia Multimodal Park at Hurt. Staff examined our current incentives and boundaries for the purpose of updating this, and we have engaged in a much-needed revision process, which is encouraged by the Department of Housing and Community Development, which oversees the enterprise zone program for the state. The enterprise zone is an overlay district, so any changes to the zone do not affect the current zoning, allowed uses, and enjoyment of the property. Proposed changes include the following. Enterprise Zone 24, we propose to remove 350 acres at the Southern Virginia Mega site at Berry Hill and add in 836 acres, which includes property in the Blair's area across from Virginia Candle and land around the Southern Virginia Multimodal Park in Hurt. Regarding Enterprise Zone 57, we propose to remove 546 acres of land, which includes school grounds in Gretna, church properties and private residences, and add 288 acres in Blair's and area around Chatham by the Old Dominion Agricultural Center. Also, the incentives don't have uniform names, and they verify in each zone, which is confusing to potential economic development recruits. Therefore, we propose that the revisions change the incentive names to make them the same and better align them with the county's economic development partner, the City of Danville. Also, the county proposes to remove incentives in Enterprise Zone 57 that can be offered by partners such as membership to the chamber by the chamber. They are not unique to the zone, which is such as the shell building program, which is offered anywhere in our industrial parks, or that are not being used, such as the sales tax rebate. Additionally, our proposed changes could serve the following purposes, such as make them less complicated, make them easier to qualify for, and reward higher job creators. In conclusion, the county's economic development staff wants to stress that these changes to the enterprise zone boundaries are being done based on real business activity. We are being told on a daily, weekly, monthly basis exactly where businesses want to go, and we want to make our incentives competitive with the rest of the state and actually the nation. We did send out 67 enterprise zone removal letters. This is required by the state. They represented 295 parcels. We didn't want to send a bunch of letters to one person if that did happen. And then staff received 13 phone calls that represented 33 parcels. The main concern was that, they were worried that the changes were happening right around their neighborhood, and we explained that the changes were zone-wide, county-wide. Therefore, their neighbors weren't gonna build something huge next to them or something like that. The county's economic development staff's proposal has been presented to the Economic Development Committee, which was supportive of staff recommendations with no changes. Due to the positive economic impact that can result from changes to the boundaries and incentives and approval of the proposed changes by the Department of Housing and Community Development, the county's economic development staff recommendation is for the board to approve the enterprise zone boundary amendments and the enterprise zone incentive amendments as presented.
Any comments from the board, Mr. McCullough?
I have a voice to Mr. Baden.
Yes, sir, Mr. Barber.
Besides, you can probably answer this, but taking it, we've under some odd plus acres out of the Berry Hill, how does that affect the park long-term without having an effect on it?
It will not. That zone was done fairly quickly to try to meet the timeframe at that particular moment, and there are floodplain areas that are included in that acreage that won't be developed.
That's what I was thinking, lady.
They're wetlands and cultural assets.
That makes sense. I just wanted to make sure I won't use them.
We're gonna open the public hearing.
I'm gonna do that. Okay, I was waiting for it to sit down. I know, I know now.
You got it.
I'm opening this public hearing at 8:20.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Davenport.
I apologize if I signed up. I forget y'all's rule.
Ben Davenport, and I'm here on behalf of Hargrave Military Academy. And anyway, we have been, we're in the middle of trying to do a big renovation of the campus. The schools is at the point of really needing some significant repair work, and we're doing all we can to get historical tax credits, any kind of tax credit we can, to help do this, about a $15 million project. Mike Locker is here. He's our, kind of our, the guy that really knows and is representing us in all of this. And we'd like to just talk a little bit about what you're doing here with the enterprise and how maybe it could impact Hargrave.
All right. With your permission, I'll have...
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good evening to you. My name is Mike Locker. I'm a CPA with Harris Harvey Neil. I do work with the enterprise zone program all over the state for different businesses. The map that was just put up that Susan and Matt have done, I think they did a great job, and I think in the long-term economic development plan, I think it's a good map. What I'd like to request the board to do, however, is to not vote a final approval tonight. I'd ask you to put it off for maybe two or three months. It really doesn't matter whether you submit that application today or if you submit it December the first, as long as it's in the calendar year, it covers that calendar year. The reason I would do that is, a couple of the letters that Susan had mentioned she received, one of them went to a client of mine, and they are actually gonna meet the requirements of the enterprise zone program in 2019, but if the map passes as is, they won't be able to apply. And there's a business in Gretna, one in Blair's, three in the Chatham area that will be similarly impacted. So, what I'd ask to do is to wait and to delay the final vote on this, give us another month or so to make sure no one else is being impacted, see if we can work it out. As Susan also mentioned, the enterprise zone, the amendment process is very flexible. So, to the extent that you change the amendment for this year, and then a prospect or a developer shows up next, you literally can change that boundary next year, too. You're allowed by law to amend that boundary once every calendar year. So, my request would be, on behalf of Hargrave and several other businesses, to not vote final today and send that application in. Give us about two months, maybe three, to revisit it, and we may pass it as is, but I think rather than to take a chance of negatively impacting several local businesses, it'd be better to wait a little bit.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Locker. Anyone else that didn't sign up, get an opportunity to speak? All right, I close this public hearing at 8:43. Counsel, I'm gonna go on your thoughts here on this after I have the board's discussion if they would like to do. Okay? I'm opening the board up for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Do we have any prospects that delaying it a month or two would make a difference for them?
They are, our prospects know we're working to get them in the enterprise zone. This may adversely affect it, yes, sir. Also, the timeline referenced earlier is not quite accurate because DHCD needs time to do a back-and-forth review with us, with staff, and with their office to make sure they approve the maps and that everything meets their requirements. And also, the businesses referenced was two banks, one bank that's not in the enterprise zone and hadn't been, and an office that is not in the enterprise zone and hasn't been that's near Hargrave.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other question. We mentioned amending, so if we were to pass the enterprise zone because of the situation we all know we have right now, and we needed to amend in order to accommodate a need at Hargrave, how would that happen, and is that possible?
I did speak with DHCD about this. Hargrave, the estimated acreage so far, and a rough estimate, is about 250 acres, including right-of-way. I don't think the parcels have been carved out as part of a subdivision yet. It would not adversely affect Hargrave since you can, we can apply a year after it's approved. So, say it's approved in June, we can apply next June, and it would be retroactive as of January 1st, 2020. It can be...
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I have one other question for our Hargrave representatives. Would that meet your anticipated needs based on the timeline?
It may, it may. The concern I have with Hargrave and several of the other organizations I mentioned is they will meet requirements in 2019, so that amendment would have to be effective with the year 2019. So, if the application was sent into DHCD, say, in July, they could easily, before the end of the year, change that. But if the boundaries are changed effective for 2020, then, I have to count them, but I think there's four altogether, those folks, three of the four, will not be able to apply. So, the grant they would have gotten would have gone to some other business, some other part of the state, as opposed to a local business getting it.
You want to answer that?
The only business that's affected by the current removal request, the boundary amendment, is a bank in Blair's. It's a Carter Bank. Everything else is currently not in the zone. We can do an amendment next year, a year from, a year after this request, it should be approved, and it can be retroactive January 1st. They would have to have that final CO after January 1st for it to work.
January 1st of 2020.
Correct, for Hargrave.
Okay. And the others that are not in the enterprise zone now, we would have to wait till whenever we were ever gonna amend the change.
We'd have to reexamine. The intent of the enterprise zone is, we were directed, is to look at the large industries, those that affect the tax base, those that affect job creation, and we're looking at large job creators that pay good salaries. I understand there was a lot of good work that's being done with historic tax credits and leveraging enterprise zone benefits, but because we're such a large county, every acre counts, and we have a max of 3,840 acres.
And that's why you're trying to get the modifications, is to accommodate prospects that we currently have?
Yes, sir, large prospects. Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion?
I have some reservations about voting on this issue tonight. Hargrave Military, I'm from the northern end of the county, and I represent the standard of a district, but Hargrave Military Academy has been a rock-solid part of this county for a long, long time. If they've got concerns about us delaying a vote to take a look at enterprise zones, unless we're up against some kind of deadline that's really gonna have a negative effect on some type of large employer, I would rather for us to wait. Is that gonna be the case?
If worse comes to worse, could we, basically, we can look at adding Hargrave, the problem, or in other businesses. The problem is, this process has been going on for two years. It was going on way before I got here, and DHCD is looking for an amendment from us. They've approved the map, and they've asked us to move forward with the incentives and with the boundary amendment. Because this is such a large process with the boundary amendment and the map amendment, the incentive amendment, this has been extremely time-consuming. It won't take as much time to add in a few parcels next year.
Yes, sir, Mr. Barber.
Mr. Davenport, you may now answer this. Were you consulted about this with Hargrave?
Because it's not in the zone already, we only sent removal letters as required by the state to those that are being removed, and this has been a duly-advertised public hearing.
Why don't you tell how you reacted? When you called, let me know about this.
Yeah, we kinda found out about the process kind of by accident when the client called me, but yeah, this is, and by the way, you know, waiting another two months, it doesn't impact...
But, yeah, this is, and by the way, you know, waiting another two months, it doesn't impact anything one way or the other, and that may not change at all. But I would request, and I think Ben's saying the same thing, is that it would be, it would be just a nice due diligence part on your behalf to have a chance to make sure that you didn't cut anybody short, a local business short that might be able to participate. So that's what we requested, just to let us take a look at it for the next two months, and it may not change at all.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Warren.
What is the dates on our June meeting? Because we're meeting early this month.
It's June the 18th.
June the 18th, so five, six weeks. If we table this till next month, because we need to, there's other things that are going on behind the scenes, would that be acceptable with Hargrave and Ms. Davenport to, and then we accommodate everybody with June meeting? Then I'm gonna make a motion that we table this motion until our June meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Warren to table this to our June meeting, and we have a second by Mr. Barber. Is there any other consideration or discussion?
I mean, I think that's good common ground. You know, I think as a county, we need to move forward and support the direction our staff is asking us, but also, at the same time, we have a customer who's got some reserve about us. I think it's good common ground for both parties.
Okay. Counsel, I think I got ahead of myself. I'm supposed to close this public hearing.
Yes, sir.
I close this public hearing at 8:33.
Now I'll move to table this until June.
Mr. Warren makes the motion, seconded by Mr. Barber. Further discussion?
Sir, I'd like to say, I think we're handling this correctly. Hargrave is a very important part of Pennsylvania County's history.
I agree.
My son went there for several years, and I know when he wore that Hargrave shirt, I don't care where you went, the whole country, people recognized that name. So, I mean, it's part of economic development in Pennsylvania County, and Chatham Hall, I mean, it's two great schools we're fortunate to have. So I think that's the right thing to do, work with them.
I agree with Mr. Davenport, who does much that's untold in support of Hargrave, and Hargrave has been an icon, really, for our county for a number of years. Okay, no more discussion. Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Vote passes unanimously. Table this till next month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, relocation of the voting precincts and approval of a related revision to the PCC Section 8-7. Ms. Kelly Bayless.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and fellow board members. I am here tonight to present to you the need to relocate two voting locations. We had previously spoke about the need to relocate the Riceville Precinct from the Riceville Missionary Baptist Church Fellowship Center to the Riceville Volunteer Fire Department, as well as the Mount Herman Precinct. The owner of that facility notified us that they now have a full-time tenant within the Mount Herman Courtyard. Therefore, we needed to relocate it. In their lease agreement, they are not allowed to rent it to anybody else, so we had to find a new voting location for the Mount Herman Precinct. I toured several locations within the voting precinct boundary lines, and we found the New Life Community Church to be a viable option for us. It has ample parking. It is handicap accessible. Since our last meeting, we have mailed all the notices to the voters and submitted the approval to the State Board. We have received just a few calls in regards to concern as to why it's been moved, because it's been there for quite a while. And after we explained to folks that we were required to move it because that facility is no longer available, folks seemed to understand. So I come to you tonight with the request of, after the public hearing, to approve the relocation of those two voting locations.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board? I want to open this public hearing up at 8:35. No one signed up? I'm gonna close this public hearing at 8:35. Any discussion with the board? All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment to the Pennsylvania County Code, Section 8-7, permanently relocating the Riceville Voting Precinct from the Riceville Missionary Baptist Church Family Life Center to the Riceville Java Volunteer Fire Department located at 3105 Java Road, Java, Virginia, and relocating the Mount Herman Voting Precinct from the Mount Herman Courtyard to the New Life Community Center located at 3837 U.S. Highway 29, Danville, Virginia.
All right, thank you, Mr. Farmer. We have a motion by Mr. Farmer. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Barber and Mr. Scares at the same time. I heard you loud as Mr. Scares, so I will say Mr. Scares came in second. You guys were close on that, very close. Any further discussion on this? Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Unfinished business.
We don't have any, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. New business, approval and adoption of emergency operations plan.
Good evening, everyone. First order of business I have before you is the readoption of the emergency operations plan. Virginia code requires that we, that all localities have a plan that they use, or that guides them during disasters and weather-related events and so forth. It is required that every four years that that code be read adopted, reviewed and read adopted. It's a little over 300 pages long. I don't think you want me to go through the whole thing tonight. So we spent the last few months, my staff and as well as an intern, going through that. The nuts and bolts of it are basically the same as it was in 2015 when you read adopted it. The biggest thing, obviously, just changed some of the contact numbers, and some of the people that are in key positions have changed since that time. And there'll be one other minor change that I'm working out, started today. I realized this weekend, if you didn't see it, you know, we had a fire down at the apartments outside of Danville, and because we had so many people displaced, we had to open a shelter. And luckily, we worked with the city of Danville. They allowed us to use one of the schools that was close to the fire, so we wouldn't have to transport people. But, you know, all of our shelters are in schools in this county, and that impacts the schools. Normally, when you're gonna open a shelter, most of the time, it's gonna be a major event, you're not gonna be having school. But this was a case we didn't have, so I worked with Mark Moore today. We're gonna use, I'm gonna add the community center into the list of shelters. I've just gotta get Red Cross to kind of go down there. They'll bless it, and we'll make it a Red Cross shelter as well, so they'll help staff. As we open a shelter, you have to have Red Cross Social Services and so forth. But anyhow, that is the nuts and bolts of that. Everything in the plan, for the most part, stayed the same. We just need a motion to, a resolution to read adopt the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Slim. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion we approve as presented.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Barber. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Warren. Any further comments, discussion?
Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Slim, the one thing I would ask for, that when you do these the next time, if changes could be highlighted.
Ah, okay.
Yes, ma'am, then we can just kind of-
Not a problem.
... The other thing is, you know, if the board's willing, I would like to see us have the chairman send a letter to the city of Danville, in particular, the school system, for their willingness to work with us and open that school up for our folks to use during that time of need.
All right.
I think that would be very appropriate, do that, yes, sir. That was a big help, huge help to us.
Getting off the topic a little bit, with the Cool Branch, the ladder truck you used for Cool Branch on that case?
We used every ladder truck we had in the county. Cool Branch, Chatham, Ringo.
Yeah, I saw it go out, which is unusual for a ladder truck in my area, of course.
Yeah, we caught on. Pretty much, the majority of our departments responded to that fire. Did a fantastic job, fantastic job down there.
Yes, sir, Mr. Warren.
And I believe that's the second fire at that unit, that structure, isn't it?
But that particular one, I believe, sir, yes. We've had more than that down in September. We're actually starting, we're gonna get aggressive with some fire prevention, public education at some of the apartment complexes very quickly because of that, and I have some serious concerns.
Mr. Chairman, do we have any programs which, I know there's some out there, and you're probably already doing it, so I'm probably asking a question that's pertinent, but do we have any situations where we can get fire or smoke detectors donated to help these?
Actually, I talked to the Red Cross that this weekend. They have a program that we're getting ready to sign on with, that they will give us, they'll have more grant money in July, and we'll be able to get in with them and start using their smoke detector program. I talked with Ralph Lawson about that over the weekend.
Thank you, Mr. Slim. Good job, well done. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Carries unanimously. Well, you have that, Mr. Slim. Thank you. Next, we have the generation, the next generation of 911. Am I through?
You're good.
You're through with that one. Now you move to next gen.
Okay. Pardon me, Mr. Slim, you were on the docket again.
Oh, I'm on it a couple times.
911, grant agreement.
Yes, sir. So back in December, if you may recall, I came to you and gave you a little bit of a background on next generation 911. Next generation 911 is a requirement of the state. It is basically dealing with how a call is received. You may never see it on your side of the 911 system, but on our side, it's how a call comes into the center, how it may be transferred and so forth. We are scheduled to be upgraded in July of 2020, a year away. However, in December, you all had, went ahead and allowed me to try to secure grant fundings while they were there that will pay for our upgrade. So we have done that, and we have been awarded a grant, and it will pay for the upgrade. It will also pay for the first 24 months of additional incurred cost once we flip the switch on the new system, which is still probably a good, I'm guessing, 16 months at least away before we do that. But as a requirement of this, we are required to sign a participation agreement with whoever is going to do the work for the upgrade. Several months ago, Fairfax County went out and hired a consultant and bid a project, and AT&amp;T was awarded that. It is the only one in the state right now. If we wanted to do that and bid our own, I'd have to hire a consultant. It's such a technical document, we would have to have a consultant do it for us. So we have reviewed that. I've had Connie review it in purchasing, and it does meet all the Virginia purchasing requirements. And what we're asking for is to go ahead and sign a participation agreement, so we'll be within the 90 days, and we'll have our money secured, and it will be with AT&amp;T, and that will be who will do our work when the time comes.
All right, Mr. Slim, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize county staff to sign the attached AT&amp;T participation agreement for the 2020 NG 911 upgrade.
We have a motion by Mr. Blackstock.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Palmer. Any further discussion?
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And this might be from Ms. Vanderheide. Was this particular amount in our current upcoming budget here?
No, because we didn't know what that amount is. So you all will appreciate that, at that time that we know what that amount is, it shouldn't be in the budget. So it should just be a process of planning.
Yeah, this was covering 100% of the upgrade, and like I say, the first 24 months as well.
Yeah, I just didn't know if we had a savings, if we had it covered, and then this was just a bonus.
Oh, no. No, that's why I went ahead and grabbed the money now while it was there, because you never know when the general assembly goes back in next year for as a pot of money, it could be gone. So, yeah, we dove on as quick as we could.
Have any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Resolution 2019-05-02, Blair's Fire and Rescue Tax Exempt Uses Authorization. Mr. Slim.
Thank you, sir. Chief Fowler had asked me to speak on his behalf. He couldn't be here tonight. In the past, we've allowed departments to tap into the tax-exempt bonds for financing of equipment. Last year, we allowed Rena and to do that. The board gave them approval to do that. This year, Blair's was recipient of our fire truck money. They were one of two departments in the past, in this current budget, that got that, and they purchased a 2019 Pierce Custom Cab fire engine. They have held a public hearing as required by the code, and now that comes before the board for a resolution to allow them to tap into the tax-exempt bonds, not to exceed $330,000.
Any discussion? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-05-02, allowing Blair's Fire and Rescue Inc. to utilize up to, but not exceeding, $330,000 of the county's tax-exempt IRS bond capacity for the purchase of one 2019 Pierce Enforcer Custom Cab, 1750 GPM pumper truck, and additional equipment.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Warren. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Scares. Is there any further discussion?
This does not affect FY '20s, where we have two in the budget.
No, sir, this is, yes, this, no, it does not.
Thank you. All right, hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Slim.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Item D, request for tipping fee waiver, that is, Leesville Lake Association. Mr. Hicks.
Okay, I think they do this every year, and in the past, the board has waived the tipping fees. They clean up the lake and get stuff out of the lake and trash around the lake, so we're asking for authorization to waive those tipping fees.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Leesville Lake Association's request to waive the landfill tipping fees for the debris to be collected for this 2019 beautification day event.
All right, we have a move, the mover, Mr. Blackstock. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Palmer. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Carries unanimously. Thank you. Next is the radio tower project change approval. Mr. Hicks.
Can we currently have two new radio towers under construction? The first one is started at the Tunstall Fire Department, and the second one will be at the old Mayfield Convenience Center. Also, part of that project, we will be adding additional equipment to the Kentuck radio tower, which is behind the middle school. The county will be adding equipment. We've had a request from two cellular companies to add additional equipment to that tower. That will require some modifications to the foundations of the tower. We would like to do that by change order if it's authorized by the county attorney, and we also anticipate one-third of the cost being paid by each of the two cellular companies. So one-third will be paid by the county, one-third will be paid by one cellular company, and the third by the second cellular. and the third by the second cellular company. So, Tom, again, we're asking for authorization to do this by change order, subject to final opinion of council and the actual financial participation by the cellular companies.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. This is coming out of the work session. Do I, do we have a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to authorize the county administrator to execute a change order for the Kentuck Iowa modifications contingent upon financial participation by AT&amp;T and Verizon, or a combination thereof, and subject to legal verification of compliance with the Virginia Public Procurement Act.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Blackstock.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Warren. Do we have any further discussion?
Just like a point out to the public that this was discussed in great detail during the work session this afternoon.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Palmer. No further discussion? Thank you. Hearing none?
All right, let's get that second on there. All right, please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hicks.
Thank you.
Pet Center Grant Appropriations. Ms. Kimberly Vanderhyde.
Yes, as you all heard from James McLaughlin, he's the pet center director. He has been working diligently to secure grants to help offset the costs associated with the pet center operations, and he has successfully secured, obtaining two grants totaling six thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-seven cent. One of those grants was awarded by the Roper Foundation in the amount of six thousand dollars and will be used for the purchase of pet center supplies and provide medical care for the animals. And the second grant was awarded by the Pet Founder Foundation in the amount of five sixty-four thirty-seven. And this particular foundation will pay for things that are extraordinary expenses that are not normally covered. This actual expense was for one dog that had a necessary medical condition that needed to be fixed, and so these funds paid for that medical procedure that without it, this animal would have perished. So, because of that, we will probably, you will be seeing more of those Pet Finder grants coming through, along the way. So, tonight, I'm just asking for an appropriation of six thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-seven cent to the grant fund, and that's where we're going to house those, any of those animal foundation grants, just so that we can track them properly. And so, they are requiring no local match, so all of the money goes in, and it's taken care of without any funds required from you all tonight. So, I would just ask that you all approve that appropriation to the grants fund tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Vanderhyde. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appropriate a total of six thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-seven cent to the grants fund as listed above in our packet.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Warren. Have any further discussion? Anything you'd like to say? All right, hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Vote carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Vanderhyde. Application for the music festival permit. Ms. Kailin McCluster.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Chapter ten of the Pennsylvania County Code requires the person promoting or conducting any music or entertainment festival to obtain a special entertainment permit for said festival. Mr. Chuck Eskey is in the process of completing his application, which actually, we have it. He did complete it, and it is included in your packet. He wants to hold a classic rock music festival on September the twenty-seventh of two thousand nineteen through September twenty-ninth of two thousand nineteen at the White Oak Mountain Amphitheater. A copy of that application is in your packet for your review.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. McCluster. Do I have a motion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve Mr. Eskey's music festival permit.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Warren.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Scares. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like for the board's information. Mr. Eskey's in attendance tonight. He reached out to me earlier, since this falls in, in, in my district, and it is his intention, if this is successful, to make it a, a multiple event per year, and he's already reached out to some of the organizations that need funds to help support them that, that are 501(c)(1) related. We learned tonight that one of those happened to be the pet center.
Yes.
So, not only is he trying to do something to bring some tourism and some folks into the county and entertain them, but he's willing to give back for those efforts too, and I just thought it was important for the board to know that. If the board has any concerns, I'm sure Mr. Eskey can answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. We have a motion by Mr. Warren and a seconded by Mr. Scares. Is any further discussion?
One question.
Yes, sir.
Mr., this is from Mr. Hunt. No public hearing is required for this?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eskey, for doing this, and we have one law enforcement gentleman here tonight that sits on the back, extremely quiet. All I'm going to say to him is, he needs to get his group, and I'm looking forward to hearing the song, "Born in the USA." Okay, do we have?
And I'll tell you, Mr. Farmer, Mr. Eskey, our permit, he has jumped through a lot of hoops before we bring it to you.
Yeah.
He has to contact law enforcement, Virginia Department of Health, VDOT, the sheriff, fire and rescue. We required him to have insurance. He did all his due diligence. That's why we don't have him here. We don't bring it to you unless he ticks all the boxes.
Well done. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Small business at work. Good job.
That's correct. Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Carries, Mr. Eskey. Thank you. Our final few items are appointments. Do we have any appointments?
No, sir.
Yes, sir. Matters from work session, if any?
No, none.
Thank you. Board members reports. Mr. Barber?
I have none, sir.
All right, Mr. Blackstock? Mr. Palmer?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Scares?
Yeah, just one quick thing. This weekend, I attended a fundraiser at a VIR Racing for Heroes Tactical. It's an organization out there that they had access to some fully automatic fifty-calibers and thirty-calibers, and we got to blow a lot of good things up. And the money they raised is going to a veterans wellness center. So, they're going to have another, another event in August. I'll remind all you guys about it. If you want to go blow things up, it'll be an interesting time.
I would like that. Thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Warren?
Mr. Chairman, I really just want to congratulate the employees again on their service and reiterate what you said, that very much appreciated all of your work and all of your efforts. I think we have the greatest employees that anyone, any municipality could possibly have.
I wholeheartedly agree, and I would just like to make the public aware that I'm still struggling, and I don't know everything, but I have a hidden staff that they bounce me along, and they have queues, and I do appreciate it. I'm not seeing any queue cards up here, but I do appreciate them helping me along. And I want to thank the Honorable Mr. Shorter for being here tonight, the Honorable Mike Taylor, the Honorable Brian Haskins. Mr. Davenport has left. Ms. Vanderhyde, thank you for your service, the lady beside you. Mr. Seid, Mr. Vaden Hunt. I want to thank law enforcement. It's always quiet and glad when we leave, but thank you for your work. Thank you, Matthew Bell. Ms. McCluster. Ms. Holly Stanfield has left. Ms. Susan McCulloch has left. And then, last but not least, Mr. Scott Bud Butt, the very best, one of the best, Mr. Kevin Bumper, who is very quiet, always quiet. Thank you, Mr. Slim, for being here as well, Mr. Moore. But Kevin Bumper, who is extremely quiet, my wife would love for me to be just like this man. I want to thank him for all the work he's done continuously this year, and has quietly, unassumingly went right on, and I completely missed him. Not anymore. He does a fine job, and I'm thankful that he keeps and looks out for me. Two things I would request to keep in your thoughts and prayers. First and foremost, Mr. Blackstock, who's here to sick tonight, and that's the dedication of a supervisor. He's here, he's sick in body, he's got a lot of stuff going on health-wise, as far as colds and other things that I won't mention, because I have my own issues myself. But that's the dedication that it takes to be here, to be active even when you're sick. I appreciate that from him. And the gentleman, Mr. Shields, back there, I'm told he is on life support. I don't know the status of his situation. Mr. Shields' picture back there, he's on life support. He had a massive stroke, and I would ask you to keep him in your thoughts and prayers as well. Mr. County Administrator, Mr. Greg Seid's the assistant. You got anything, sir?
I would just, I, I thank you all for thanking staff. We, we do appreciate that, and as far as like a meeting tonight, putting together the agenda, the staff that comes and supports the agenda items, I think we've got a great team, and I really appreciate everybody's help.
I agree. I agree. All right, Mr. County Attorney, Mr. Esquire, Jay Vaden Hunt. Do you have anything, sir?
I want to go home and say no.
I call the meeting adjourned.